We're good.
Okay, I call this meeting of the Longwood City Commission to order at being a little later than six o'clock on November seventeenth. We appreciate you all in coming and we will start. So with our opening invocation, we'll be with Father Daniel Hickman with St. Stephen, the Portimao Orthodox Church.
Thank you for having me and thank you to the mayor for attending our Georgian Festival recently. It was nice to have you with us. Oh Lord, our God, Creator of heaven and earth, you are the source of wisdom, justice, and peace. We give thanks to you and for this city, for its people, and for the blessings you have bestowed upon our community. Grant, oh Lord, to those gathered here, our council members, leaders, and citizens, the spirit of discernment, humility, and compassion. Guide their deliberations that every decision may be made with fairness, integrity, and love for neighbor. Bless this city, its families, its schools, and its workplaces. Protect us from division and strife and unite us in the pursuit of the common good. May your light shine upon Longwood that it may be a place of peace, prosperity, and mutual care. For you are the God of mercy and truth, and to you we give glory to the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit now and ever and unto ages of ages. Amen.
Pledge of Aces to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, next is community announcements and city clerk, if when you read them, I know the movie's not about me, so that's okay. It might be.
Four A, the senior matinee will be held on Wednesday, November nineteenth, from one thirty to three thirty, at the Longwood Community Building, two hundred West Warren Avenue. This month's feature is grumpy old men. Four B, the Longwood Arts and Crafts Festival will be held on Saturday, November twenty-second, from nine to five, and Sunday, November twenty-third, from nine to four. Artists and crafters will line the streets in the historic district of Longwood, located off West Church Avenue and West Warren Avenue. There will be food, beverages, and light entertainment. This is a free event and additional free parking is available at the Longwood Sun Rail Station parking lots and the Orlando Health Back parking lot. Those are all the community announcements.
And I just also want to add, the movie, we will be having a Thanksgiving lunch at the movie. That's gonna pack 'em in this weekend with this weather, the way it's supposed to be wonderful. Proclamation and recognition, Chief Dowda, will you come forward, your proclamation?
Thank you. Good evening, David Dowda, Police Chief. On July fourteenth, two thousand and seven, Sergeant Carl Strohsel was struck and killed by a vehicle on Interstate Four. That evening, Sergeant Strohsel had been supervising a nighttime investigative operation. At the conclusion of the event, he was involved in a traffic crash after he swerved to avoid a chair intentionally placed in the roadway. As a prank. As a result, his unmarked vehicle became disabled in the center lane of I-4. After he exited his vehicle, another vehicle approached the crash scene at a high rate of speed. Sergeant Strohsel attempted to cross the inside lane to the shoulder on foot, and the driver of the oncoming vehicle, who was later determined to be driving under the influence, changed lanes at the last moment to avoid striking his patrol car, but tragically struck Sergeant Strohsel instead. Carl Strohsel served the Longwood Police Department for eighteen years and previously had served the New York City Police Department for fourteen, prior to moving to Florida. At the conclusion of, excuse me, at the time of his death, Carl left behind a loving spouse, Carol, his daughter Lori, and his son Jason, and many friends and loved ones, including a devastated police department staff. Carl was an outstanding law enforcement officer and a mentor to myself and many others. He was highly respected by his subordinates, peers, and managers. Carl did not lose his life that night. He gave it trying to make our city a safer place. John fifteen thirteen is often quoted and appropriate here, I believe. Greater love hath no man than this, that a man lay down his life for his friends. We owe Sergeant Strohsel and his family great appreciation and respect for his sacrifice. As a demonstration of our respect, the City of Longwood Commission and the members of its police department are honored to memorialize his name with a roadway designation. It is my hope that this tribute will serve to acknowledge the heroic person we lost that night nearly twenty years ago. I'm honored to invite Ms. Lori Strohsel Berger, Sergeant Strohsel's daughter, forward to help reveal a commemorative version of the signs that as of this afternoon designate the portion of Interstate Four between Central Parkway and E.E. Williamson as the Sergeant Carl Strohsel Memorial Highway. Ms. Berger? Ms. Berger, I hope this leaves you with a sense of the respect we have for your father as a law enforcement officer and the sacrifice he and your family made for our community. Would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to thank you and tell you how grateful I am that my father is remembered so respectfully by his peers and everyone that knew and loved him as much as they do. We miss him every day. It's very hard to not to be here with, you know, without my father, and I do appreciate everything and for this memorial for him. Thank you.
Obviously, this took the assistance of a number of people to accomplish, so I, before I conclude, I'd like to thank a few people. Number one, the City Commission. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for your support in this project. I'd also like to thank the Seminole County Board of Commissioners, who also had a hand in the approval. I'd
with us. We would not be insulted if you left, that's fine. Otherwise, we'll continue
with us. We would not be insulted if you left, that's fine. Otherwise, we'll continue
like to specifically thank Mr. Robert Cortez, our former mayor. As you know, he is currently
the agenda in about a minute or so. the agenda in about a minute or so.
a senior administrator of governmental and community affairs with the Seminole County Sheriff's Office. His assistance was invaluable in the legislative action that was necessary to make this happen. Of course, I would like to thank Sheriff Dennis Lima of the Seminole County Sheriff's Office and his Chief of Staff for supporting Mr. Cortez's assistance.
I'd like to thank the sponsors of House Bill nine eighty-seven and Senate Bill fourteen I'd like to thank the sponsors of House Bill nine eighty-seven and Senate Bill fourteen
I'd like to thank the sponsors of House Bill nine eighty-seven and Senate Bill fourteen oh eight. That would be Chairman Chuck Brannan, and then Senator, and now Lieutenant Governor
oh eight. That would be Chairman Chuck Brannan, and then Senator, and now Lieutenant Governor oh eight. That would be Chairman Chuck Brannan, and then Senator, and now Lieutenant Governor
Jay Collins. I'd also like to thank the Seminole County Legislative Delegation members,
Jay Collins. I'd also like to thank the Seminole County Legislative Delegation members, Jay Collins. I'd also like to thank the Seminole County Legislative Delegation members,
Senator Jason Broder, Representative Rachel Plankton, Representative Doug Banksen, Representative
Senator Jason Broder, Representative Rachel Plankton, Representative Doug Banksen, Representative Senator Jason Broder, Representative Rachel Plankton, Representative Doug Banksen, Representative
David Smith, and Representative Susan Placina. Staff Director of the Senate Transportation
David Smith, and Representative Susan Placina. Staff Director of the Senate Transportation David Smith, and Representative Susan Placina. Staff Director of the Senate Transportation
Committee, Mr. Robert Vickers, was also instrumental in making this happen. And last
Committee, Mr. Robert Vickers, was also instrumental in making this happen. And last Committee, Mr. Robert Vickers, was also instrumental in making this happen. And last
but not least, I'd like to thank Florida Department of Transportation Staff, Amy Beckman
but not least, I'd like to thank Florida Department of Transportation Staff, Amy Beckman but not least, I'd like to thank Florida Department of Transportation Staff, Amy Beckman
and Lorene Babo. Commissioners, thank you. That concludes my presentation. I was hoping
and Lorene Babo. Commissioners, thank you. That concludes my presentation. I was hoping and Lorene Babo. Commissioners, thank you. That concludes my presentation. I was hoping
that we could have a picture if you have a moment.
that we could have a picture if you have a moment. that we could have a picture if you have a moment. Okay, in case a few of you or a lot of you want to go home for dinner, that's okay Okay, in case a few of you or a lot of you want to go home for dinner, that's okay Okay, in case a few of you or a lot of you want to go home for dinner, that's okay with us. We would not be insulted if you left, that's fine. Otherwise, we'll continue the agenda in about a minute or so. You're very welcome. He looks just like him. The grandson. Yes, he's got the same face. It's all about the face. No, once it rings, it rings true. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate you guys.
Okay, continuing with the agenda, we move to District Four. Do you have a nominee for the Land Planning Agency?
I do. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Jessica Palmer to the LPA. She's already the Chair of this entire board, and the fact that she's so willing to always want to contribute to it and be the Chair, I, yeah, I'm definitely renominating Jessica Palmer.
Okay, that requires a vote. All in favor of Jessica Palmer returning to the LPA, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any? Congratulations on returning Jessica. Now we move to public input. We have a presentation from a group that stands up for the So the Arts Never Die. Could you come forward, please, and introduce yourself and tell us all about your organization?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chantel Hampton, and I am the President of Stand Inc., So the Arts Never Die. I'm also a local pastor at Church on the Living Edge on Markham Woods Road, and it's wonderful to be here tonight. I actually felt a little bit of relief when everybody left. But I want to begin by expressing my gratitude to Deputy Mayor Shoemaker for both inviting me but also supporting us, as we are not a new organization but new to the community. So I'm so grateful. And Mr. Watts, and Leanne, and the whole Commissioner Board, thank you so much for inviting us here this evening. So Stand Inc. is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization founded in nineteen ninety-eight in Boston, Massachusetts, with a mission to ensure that the arts never die. We focus on creativity, leadership, identity, mentorship, and community impact. Our work brings together education, industry exposure, and entrepreneurship. Preparing, I think my...
That was me.
Oh, okay. I think it's on now. Okay. Preparing young people for creative workforce and helping them build purpose-filled lives. One of the biggest challenges our young people face today is the widening gap between education and real-world career readiness. Seventy-two percent of high school students don't feel prepared for the creative workforce. Forty-nine percent of Gen Z don't believe school is preparing them for the future, according to the National Arts Education Association. And nearly three-fourths of college students say they don't feel ready for real careers. That's a sad statistic. So students today have talent, but not always the tools, the mentorship, and the access and exposure. I've spent over twenty-five years in the creative industry, performing, producing, mentoring, and teaching. I'm a graduate of Berklee College of Music with a Bachelor's in Music, and New York University with a Master's in Educational Leadership. And I've taught at both Berklee and Full Sail University here in Orlando, and mentored students at Worcester Polytechnic Institute in Massachusetts. But beyond education, I also run a music production and creative agency called Spectrum Music Group, as well as the Worship and Arts Pastor at Church on the Living Edge, where my business partner and I have worked with top-tier artists, companies, and collaborative ventures. One of our biggest artists that we've worked with today is Pitbull, Jennifer Lopez, Sting, and many others. We've produced for Disney, iHeartRadio, for the Grammys, as well as the Oscars. We've recently completed a project for Disney, which will be aired on ABC next week, and we are preparing for Pitbull's worldwide tour starting next year. I also collaborate closely with a Longwood neighbor, Rodney Darkchild Jerkins, a legend in the music industry. And one of the things that we all discuss is the need for the next generation to be mentored and empowered to do the same. In speaking to Mr. Watts, I shared with him that although I was raised in Boston, my roots go deep in the Longwood community, as well as Altamont Springs community. My father, my late father Leroy Hampton, was a Lyman High School graduate who migrated to Boston in nineteen eighty-five as a young musician. There, he met my mother, and he got stuck there. But, growing up, even though I was in Boston, home was here. We would come back three to four times a year to visit my father's family. And my grandfather, who was a longtime principal in Seminole County, he served at Midway Elementary, as well as Goldboro Elementary, for thirty years as a principal. And so education, service, and community service is a part of my family legacy. And I'm not doing a good job at coordinating my clicker.
There you are, you're doing good.
Thank you. A brief history about Stand. So in nineteen ninety-eight, my father and mother founded Stand in Boston, Massachusetts, through starting a fifty-voice youth choir at our local church. There, the youth began to get notoriety through ABC World News, and they began to travel and partner with Lenny Zachem, and starting to travel around the community, as well as the world. And this is the first time for many of our youth that they were able to actually get out of their community. That was the first time for many of them. So in nineteen twenty, excuse me, two thousand and nineteen, I moved to my dad's hometown and decided to relaunch this vision, and it all began here, when he decided to venture out. Our purpose has always been the same, to empower youth and strengthen communities. Currently, we have four programs that we're offering here in the Longwood community at Church on the Living Edge. Our first initiative and our pillar initiative is the Arts Embassy Academy, which we actually launched this September, two thousand and twenty-five. We have the Arts Embassy Leadership Academy, which launched in two thousand and twenty-four. We have the Creative Arts Summer Intensive, which meets annually and has been doing so for the past five years, which is a three-to-five-day summer intensive for youth. And then we have something that we call the Playground, which is a quarterly adult creative camp. This fall, we launched the Arts Embassy Academy with a small after-school cohort of six students highly interested in the creative industries. We teach business foundations, entrepreneurship, and creative industry fundamentals. In the industries of music production, culinary arts, visual and digital arts design, film and theater, and then next term, we'll focus on fashion design. This cohort is our pilot program, but beginning next fall, we are expanding into a full-day private school program with approximately ten to fifteen students. We are currently applying for the full private school status and are already step-up providers. We also aim to support homeschool families who desire a more personalized, creative, project-based academic model. The Arts Embassy Academy is designed for families seeking a different, student-centered way of learning. The Arts Embassy Leadership Academy is our twelve-month development program for young creative adults ages eighteen through thirty-five. Participants receive a six-month intensive leadership, creative, and teaching training, followed by six months of hands-on coaching. Our cohort graduated this summer after teaching at COSI, and they represent the future of educators and creative professionals who will pour back into the young community. And as I mentioned before, the Playground is our quarterly creative camp for adults, a space to reconnect with imagination, joy, and creativity. Why let the kids have all the fun? Some of the adults need to have fun, too. So our next one is December twelfth, which will include a creative night and a showcase of our students that have joined the Arts Embassy Academy, and will end the night with a Christmas karaoke celebration.
What time?
Excuse me?
What time?
Six-thirty PM.
Please send us an invite.
Absolutely, I will. And with COSI, which was the event that Deputy Mayor Shoemaker attended this year, we had the largest class. Again, we started this program in two thousand and twenty-two with fifteen students. This year, we had twenty-eight students attend, all completely sponsored by our donors and private partners. And these students received hands-on experience in the world of television production. They built a, and they started and produced a full live television show where the students did everything. They were audience producers, they were camera people, they wrote the show, they hosted the show, and they were incredible. Among these students... I'm trying to get this to turn. Among these students, I'll keep going, were the Garcia student, the Garcia girls. And these were three young women who currently are living in a group home. Their foster parents weren't sure what to do with them over the summer, but thanks to our donors, they attended, the three of the girls, as well as three other girls in the foster care system. And they were highly influenced. They were immersed in cosmetology, so they did all the hair and makeup for all the students that performed in the showcase. And that was an experience that they never had. And so they ask me every week when I see them, are we gonna have another COSI? Can I be involved? And I'm looking forward to making that happen for them. So how does Longwood play a part? Well, one, we are looking to create partnerships with you all, and I really want us to be immersed in the community. I know that there are plenty of events that are already happening, and I would love for our students to see what's actually happening in their city, as well as get them exposed to what you all have already done, worked on, and see if there are ways that we can get mentors, as well as build relationships, not only with the students, but their parents. We have the Arts Embassy Academy, which is running throughout the year, and we want to invite major companies like EA Sports, Disney, Universal, and others, so students can receive exposure, insight, opportunities that they might not otherwise have access to. We envision Arts Embassy Academy being a hub right here in Seminole County, a center for learning, collaboration, and innovation in real-world professional development. What partnership means to us? Definitely building relationships with local businesses and creative professionals, creating mentorship pathways and exposure for students, and supporting us as we build out equipment, gear, program needs, as well as building needs, connecting us to community events and opportunities, helping us create sustainable donorship, donor, excuse me, sponsorship pipelines, and supporting homeschool and private school families seeking alternatives. We want to be fully integrated in this community, serving, contributing, and building long-term creative pathways for Longwood's youth and Seminole County's youth. Thank you all so much again for listening to this presentation. Thank you again for your support. If you are interested in learning more about what we do, you can visit us at standinc.org, as well as email me directly at chantelle@standinc.org. And I will definitely send the flyer for the Playground event for you all to attend. Thank you all so much.
One second.
Yes.
Yeah, great presentation, Chantel. And thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker, for bringing her here. Just a couple of things. Do some of the younger entrepreneurs, do they make... her here. Just a couple of things. Do some of the younger entrepreneurs, do they make things, you know, crafts and little stuff like that?
So, we're in the process of getting them to do that now. We have some students now that are literally just getting started, and many of them are visual artists. So, we're getting them in the process of actually having products ready.
Well, I would like to extend, along with Commissioner McMillan, we put on our Rotary Cup here in Longwood, puts on a mini makers' market. And it's for young entrepreneurs, what they make, they have a venue to sell it, we do it in Ryder's Park.
That's awesome.
And I think that would be a great venue for you to come in to get some exposure for Stand.
Absolutely.
And let some of your top, younger entrepreneurs have an ability to, to sell their stuff.
I love that.
And then the other option, and I'll throw it out at the commission, is we got one of the largest arts and craft shows happening this weekend, probably too late this year, but maybe we can incorporate next year that Stand can, can have a booth for their young entrepreneurs and just get that exposure. I just think what you're doing is amazing.
Thank you.
And I agree with everything that you said. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I think that would be amazing to be a part of.
All right.
Well said, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for coming. I thoroughly enjoyed the entertainment and the show that was put on, and I knew you had a lot more you could offer. So, I'm glad you reached out to Mr. Watts and got scheduled on the agenda, and you came and did your presentation. Look forward to seeing more of you in the area and more of what you, the value you bring to Longwood.
Thank you so much.
We'll see you in our future.
Thank you, Abby.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Good job bringing her, Abby. Thank you, Abby.
Next is public participation. I have none, so is that true still?
Correct.
All right, and then just skip that part and move on to eight. Mayor and Commissioners' report. We start with Commissioner Morgan, District Four, please.
My apologies, I'm beyond nasally, and I got a cold. I went to New York for eighteen hours and somehow caught a cold, so my apologies if I sound worse than I normally do. On the fifth, we had our Calno meeting over at Winter Springs Commission Chambers, and where the City of Winter Springs shared with us what drove them to need to develop a master plan to update for their Central Winds Park, which is one of their main hubs, like Ryder Park is for us. And I'm not sharing that just for the heck of I'm sharing it, because by the time the guy was done with his presentation, he thanked me, I think the city of Longwood, specifically giving kudos to Chris Kitner for the amazing blueprint, pun intended, that was left for these other cities of what was done with Ryder Park when we first opened it here. And I thought that was awesome, that he gave one of our own here, Chris Kitner, the props he deserves with our crown jewel and the biggest magnet our city has, right, Ryder Park. That was cool to see. Also in that same meeting, and this mask is annoying me, I'm sorry, guys, we also learned about the Urban SDK considerations and usage, and what that is, is a very impressive AI program that both Winter Springs Police Department, as well as more importantly, our Seminole County Sheriff's Department, is using to utilize data to be able to predict where the traffic's gonna be, to be able to show where the massive signs of speeding are happening all throughout our community, et cetera, et cetera. And it gives them in real time, you know, IRL, IRT, I should say, in real time, real stats in our, for example, if we use this, and I did share this with our city manager, Mr. Will Watts, and our chief, chief, Dowd as well, that it gives us an opportunity to get in front of these incidents before they happen, especially non-stop speeding. And every neighborhood here in Longwood thinks people are speeding through it, we all know this. But this will actually be able to back it up with actual data of measuring traffic speeds, speed limit differences, traffic volume, collision index, traffic delay, speed limit, roadway characteristics. And it's been a grand slam. I called Sheriff Lima to ask him about it. It's been a grand slam for them in that department of what happens of being able to put police in the right positions to help offset the speeding in certain neighborhoods and areas, while also being able to give, like, community notices to Seminole County residents that are gonna be driving into traffic situations. So, I did my part, shared it with city manager, hopeful that we can make use of our technology. And instead of having residents complain about people speeding through this neighborhood and that neighborhood, we'll be able to actually back it up with real, real-time data, and then make adjustments if need be. On the eleventh, I was disappointed in Lyman High School, and not disappointed, but I understood completely why they canceled their Veterans Day event, because it was going to be freezing cold. And trust me, it was freezing cold on the eleventh. Our senior citizens at Village on the Green, you normally have a parade every year that I attend and speak at, this year we had to do it indoors. So many veterans that have served our country valiantly that live over in Village, Village on the Green here in Longwood. And I appreciate that they made the pivot to do it indoors, but not give up on it nonetheless. We have our upcoming twenty-second, you already heard about it already, I'm guessing, but on the twenty-second and twenty-third, our Longwood Arts and Crafts Festival, this is another major, major draw to our city of Longwood. Upcoming on the twenty-ninth will be our Longwood Historic Society's Carols and Cocoa Event and Christmas tree lighting that will be, it's a Christmas tree, I want to specify this, a Christmas tree on Ronald Reagan specifically, that will be getting lit, but more importantly, singing Christmas carols and cocos that are gonna be sponsored, I'm assuming, by you guys, right, our Longwood Rotary Club, right? But I'll be on that same day, working at our Longwood Old Hotel to describe the history of that hotel that day. I want to say thank you to Commissioner, I'm sorry, Seminole County Commissioner Bob Dallari, because we have, at the bottom of Longwood Hills Road, there was a resident that reached out to me, rightfully so, about how dim and dark those streetlights are, especially when you get to the bottom of Longwood Hills Road before you hit the gas station. So basically, it's from the horse farm down, it's pretty dark. And there's an HOA down there at the bottom of the hill that's willing to pay for the streetlights, but to do so, they need permission from the Seminole County Commission to do so. So, huge thank you for Commissioner Dallari for meeting with me and listening to one of my Longwood residents' concerns, in that being able to get two streetlights down there, I'm really, really impressed with that, and want to say thank you to Commissioner Dallari for that. I had Career Day at my son's school, Princeton House Academy in Orlando. It's an all-autistic charter school, and this was the very first Career Day they ever had. So, the school reached out to me, like, I think you should do, you know, a politics or a city leader event. I'm like, no, these kids need to feel and be sensory-integrated to things, things that they could touch and feel and see that are exciting. And so I went with my former pro-wrestling career instead, and brought my wrestling boots, my wrestling trunks, a video that was watching different wrestling matches of mine in the past that really would captivate these autistic kids' attention. So between me and a former Pittsburgh Steelers dad that has one of his sons in the same school, I think we were the hits of that day. And shout out to the school for even thinking of doing a Career Day when other autistic schools are not even thinking of that. That same evening, I attended Central Florida Zoo, and give a shout out to Seminole County Commissioner Lee Konstantin for inviting me and my family out to that. Jackson loved it, even though it was freezing out there. He loved it, he's really into animals right now, so that was awesome to be able to bring him to that event. The ribbon cutting, you're gonna hear from others, at the Alta Trilogy, I want to be clear on this, I was somebody that is for less apartments in our city, even though we have one of the best apartment builders, walking God's green earth, in the Wood Partners. And they did another masterful job with this. I gotta be honest, they did an outstanding job with this. And one of the coolest parts about this, you guys, was when I first pulled in, I didn't pull in like where the event was, I pulled in way, way, way back. I drove around the property twice to look at it, look at the retention pond, and eventually pulled where normal residents pull in, their parking spots. And on the way in, I was able to ask two random people that lived there, what's your opinion on this? Where'd you come from? How'd you hear about it? And I was able to be blessed enough to do it on the way out with three more. So, five out of five people really could not rave and review highly enough about how great this property is, how blessed they feel to have been allowed to live in our community, by the way. And I know a lot of people assume when people rent, that doesn't mean they're gonna be emotionally invested into our city. I saw very different with this one property alone. All five out of five want to know, when's our next city events? I give them our calendar. And so, I was very, very thoroughly impressed. Huge shout out to Brian Boarding and everything he's doing with the Wood Partners. And, I think I told you already, I did an autograph convention in New York, right? Yeah, I told you guys that. And, and well, we don't have to get into the next item on the agenda about the parking, we can come back. Well, I'll just say it on the records, just so I get it on the record. I've got a lot of complaints about folks parking in their front yards, their backyards, their side yards, et cetera. And then, completely polar opposite of people being able to park in the streets. So, nonetheless, I gotta get more feedback from our city manager on what the law is on both of those. With that said, that's my report. Thank you, guys. Sorry I sound horrible.
Thank you. All right, next is my report. A lot of things happening around in the city of Longwood, and I think I was almost busy every day coming around doing something. But let's start on the fourth and fifth with Commissioner Boney, a senior food drive, but it turned out to be a food drive, the day before packing up the bags to hand out to cars as they came into the Northland Church lot. A couple hundred bags plus, and gift cards plus, everything really worked well. So, everything was packed up that night. The team that was involved in there were hustle, 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 get things done, and then they were there the next morning. I believe the first car came in at seven-thirty, even though they were not supposed to, but the traffic monitored and helped out over there, and all the food went away to people who needed it. And I was kind of impressed or questioning. We had college students stopping by that were having a hard time making ends meet over groceries. And so they were as thankful as the senior was, as thankful as the family with three or four kids were. And it, thank you, Tony, it was a wonderful event. It was just fun. And it worked out well. And then on the sixth, I had the monthly FDOT meeting where, go to Orlando and they tell you all about the road projects over the next twenty-five years. So, they locked those things all in the place. So, if you go on their site, you can see what's happening in our village, as well as the other three counties that are involved in this FDOT district. The seventh was something that I didn't expect. I thought it was kind of like a ribbon cutting for Alpha Sports, but it was really a salute to veterans, and disabled veterans, as well as veterans that were just wanting to do a fitness center. So, they have a complete fitness program for veterans in there, and it's on State Road four thirty-four, and energized to the extreme, extreme to help seniors get fit. Good to see. They were actually gonna do one of those mud climb over the wood towers and things like that the very next day. One guy who talks here often, Mr. Eric, who is the pastor of the Longwood Church down the street, he's doing a hundred-and-fifty-mile trip with a team. So, he has to be able to do at least, he said, ten, seventeen miles a day. So, I encourage him to be successful. I'll hear the report. I'm not walking a hundred-and-fifty miles, but he'll, he'll do it with his two other teammates. That'll be good. The car show for the twelfth year, one hundred and forty-fourth one, was impressive. It was the most cars I've ever seen, the work that they do to make this happen, Don, with his van and doing all the announcements and songs, and Longwood Historic Society with their food, that they are really fast-serving the hamburgers and drinks out of there. But it was fantastic to see. I've never seen that many cars. And what a beautiful night to walk around our city streets. I did want to commend something in Seminole County. I had a renewed license plates on all my vehicles. So, I went to the one in Altamont Springs, set up an appointment. I was in there and out of there in three minutes. So, boy, did they have their act together. And I appreciate our tax collector for making that a phenomenal office. On the thirteenth, which was deep down in my birthday, we attended the Alta Trilogy ribbon cutting. I am more impressed with some people who said they moved down to Alta one or two to move into three, because of management styles are a little bit different, and they just love being here and love being in the city. And they're actually looking for a home to buy in our city. But the entrance way to that apartment complex off of Dog Brack Road is amazing, and I'm glad they stuck to what they said they were doing. And it just is a key gateway to our city from Northland Inn, very nice. And it makes kids cross the street safely for the high schools and middle schools in that area. The thirteenth to the fifteenth was also seasonal, end-of-season tournament play for Longwood Bay Ruth. I went to the, all the games. And good to see the crowd and everybody being so well-behaved, and the big glitzy rings they hung out for the championship teams. Good to see the four hundred kids playing ball and enjoying it, and the parents actually behaving. The vets thing is tomorrow morning at Lyman, so I'll be there for that. Hopefully, everybody can be there. Looks good. The senior prom that this guy is doing is coming up on the twentieth, but I, I did his bingo tournament, and I lost again, but that's okay. Poker, no, I did the, I did bingo.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you were a bingo last week.
I did bingo, and then I, then I did the poker tournament, too, and it worked out well on my side for poker, except Miss Abby, I, I meant to lose and I didn't lose. So, I kept, I kept winning. I really tried to lose all my chips, and they kept coming back at me. The craft festival, my three daughters participate in that, and they've been participating in it for the past third, I don't know, since the one was three years old, and she's thirty-eight years old now. So, selling, as she said, when she was three, selling lemonade, and she sold six hundred dollars of lemonade back at that time, a long time ago. So, that is supposed to be glorious weekend with weather, no chance of rain and things like that. I will be doing the invocation at the neighborhood, Neighborhood Feast out of the Christian Sharing Center, so that'll be on the twentieth. And then Leadership Seminole has a monthly board meeting, and I'll be attending that on the twenty-first. So, pretty busy schedule, but enjoyable. I now turn to our Deputy Mayor, District One.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chantel, again for coming. And I also believe you're gonna gain some very valuable information for, from city manager for your nonprofit as well. I'm so happy you're here. Veterans Day, I went to Longwood Post eighty-two oh seven and had dinner and enjoyed the celebration of Veterans Day with all those great vets I've come to know and love so well. I went to the ribbon cutting, and absolutely, that entrance is phenomenal. And I, too, heard the conversation about how they switched there. And I guess I didn't realize that they sold some of the apartments, which kind of taints my thinking a bit, because I was under the impression that Alta always ran them with good help. But we'll see how that goes. I mean, I guess that would be a dream come true, right? Should have realized that already. The poker tournament, yes, I, I took the scout there, and I needed to know if, if I was gonna take the scout home or not, so I was looking for rides. And Brian had said, sorry, Mayor, second had said he could give me a ride. And we were both getting towards the end of our chips, where we're going all in so we can get out and go home. So, I went all in, and it took me a couple tries, but I finally, somebody won my bounty. It's all for charity, it's all for fun, and I love it. And I'm fairly good at it. And then Brian did that, but he kept winning and winning. So, so I just decided to call the scout, because, and I'm waiting on the scout as he's leaving. So, but they were, the scout is fickle. I, I got a ride from somebody today, because when I scheduled it at like five-twenty, it said it was a it was a 60 to 90-minute wait. Well, the meeting starts at 6:00, so I was not able to wait. And I have offers from our city manager anytime I need a ride, which is, God bless you for that. And so I called city manager and I ended up getting here from somebody else besides him. But I always get where I need to go some way, somehow. I doubt I'm going to be someplace early tomorrow morning. I will if I can, but I've been working and getting very little sleep for a number of days in a row, and I'm flat exhausted. But my deadlines were met today and extension filed on one. End of my report.
Okay, now we go to District Two, Commissioner Boni.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Commissioner Morgan stepped out, but he made me laugh when he said, no pun intended, and it made me think because he used the blueprint and he was the blueprint in the WWE. It made me laugh out loud, and I looked over and you were laughing, too, Leann. Alta Trilogy, unbelievable. The, what they do when you walk into the place, I mean, I wish I had apartments like that when I was in college and growing up and starting my career out and things like that. They just didn't exist this nice. And they're already, we had the ribbon cutting on Thursday, and there were 30% occupied in that facility there. They plan on selling out relatively quick, and those are the exact people we want in our city. They're high-earning individuals. They're going to shop, they're going to eat, and they're going to participate in our city. So great job, Alta Trilogy. Now, I do want to say a couple things. Senior matinees this Wednesday, we are serving Be the Change for Seniors, and Bravo supermarkets are providing the Thanksgiving lunch. But senior prom is the very next day, Thursday. And the Longwood Police Department has put that, this is the second annual one. It's amazing. Last year, some seniors came dressed up in tuxedos and gowns, and a few of them said thank you because they never went to their senior prom years ago. And I'm just going to go a little bit ahead of schedule. December 2nd is going to be Longwood Police Department's Bingo as well at the Longwood Community Building. And that's like a pajama party bingo for all the seniors. So if you're a senior, come on down and have some fun at any of those events. So hats off to Longwood Police Department with those two great events. Mayor, thank you for bringing up the food drive that we did. It was amazing. We were a little over 200 bags of food and gift cards handed out. Thank you for being there as long as you were handing the food out. I want to thank Chief Dowda and Chief Feist. They were out there in force with the Police Department, LPD, and Longwood Fire Department. Longwood Fire Department brought out our new ladder truck. It was great. And we just served a lot of people. But my favorite part was the night before. Now, I'm there thinking I'm going to be stuffing all these bags by myself, and I had thrown it out to my senior group that I meet with every Wednesday. 20 seniors from my group showed up that night to pack those bags, including the mayor. The mayor was there. And it was just amazing. We're taking pictures, and it's truly seniors helping seniors, neighbors helping neighbors. That's what it was all about. That's what this event is about. And I'm just so glad we have it here in Longwood and at Northland Church. So thank you to everybody. Will, I got a big thank you to you. A lot of times I don't bring things up that need to be done in the meetings because I just call Will. Will gets it done. I had a couple residents call me that jog along 434 and right there at the big retention pond before you get to the light, there was a big trash pile that I guess has been accumulating. And within 24 hours, it was gone. So thank you, Will. And the residents, thank you as well. And that is going to, I know there's something else I wanted to talk about. Don't forget about the Arts and Crafts Show. Again, Chantel, thank you so much for being here and sharing your vision and what you're doing. Great job. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. Commissioner McMillan of District Three, please.
Yes, I attended most of the, well, not most of, but some of the events have already been discussed. I did go to the car show. I did manage to bring the dog out, the puppy, and she had a good time. I just missed you, but I saw your family. And it was good to be out there, and they said they had a lot of people there, which is great to hear, and that they were coming early. There was one request made, if possible, to, in the, in the winter hours, when it gets darker earlier, they come earlier, if it would be possible to open up the building a little bit earlier so because they arrive early and they need to use the facilities. Maybe we could take a look at adjusting that schedule. But that was a request that was given to me. And I appreciate Father Hickman. He's left, but he identified me as the mayor because when I went to their last festival in the February, I was the mayor. But I did go to the Georgian Festival there at St. Stephen Protomartyr. It's actually being hosted by St. Nina Mission out of Orlando. And I had the opportunity to meet somebody from the Georgia Embassy. So I got their information, and they were really excited about having a Georgian community here in central Florida. And they wanted to, you know, see what they could do about promoting it. I'm pretty sure she thought I was from the city of Orlando because she's from DC and another country, and the names on some of the things were, and I did say I was from Longwood. I gave her my contact information. So I was neither from Orlando nor the mayor, but they saw me and recognized me, and I welcomed them to our city. And it was really a nice event, a nice fall festival. I attended my first Wakava Wild and Scenic River Committee meeting. It was online. They're looking for a place to meet for January. I don't know if we could offer our facilities for them. I don't know how many people show up to that, but, yeah, about 20. But if we have a space that's available, I'm more than happy to offer. I mentioned that. And we do have a new river ambassador. Unfortunately, I forgot to write down his name, but that's the gentleman who basically liaises between all of the different organizations from the Manatee Club to the county, the different counties and different cities, and all the different organizations that work on the river. So it was very enlightening. I regret that we weren't able to go to Lyman High School as well. I did have dinner with my father, who's a veteran for Veterans Day. And I do, I think that's it. So that was my report. Thank you. Oh, is it rescheduled for tomorrow? Yeah, I can be there tomorrow.
And for Lyman?
Yeah.
Yeah, they rescheduled it.
I didn't see that email.
18th, and I think you need to be there like at 7:15.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
7:15?
Yes.
Thanks, Brian.
The kids come out to do their thing at 7:30.
Thank you, buddy.
All right. Anybody who can be there, fine. All right, thank you for all the reports of information. All right, next we go to nine. Are there any additional items raised during any of the reports that we need to revisit? No, then we move on to nine A. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? You did say the minutes had, when I asked for the day off, did the minutes reflect Thanksgiving? New Year's, Thanksgiving and Christmas instead of Christmas and New Year's? So that needs to be an editing change?
It has been.
Okay. Any others, changes? None. All right, we're up to 10 consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Agenda 10A through F as written and presented.
Second.
All right, we got a motion on the entire consent agenda for 10A to 10F. Any discussion? Bearing none, please call the rule.
Mayor Sack?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boni?
Yes.
Commissioner McMillan?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Unanimous on that. 10 for five to zero. Public hearings is number 11. I see none. That's kind of a new thing around. Number 14, number 12 is regular business. Could you please read by title only?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Read by title only. Adopt Resolution Number 25-1707. Resolution 25-1707. A resolution of the city of Longwood for amending and replacing Resolution Number 15-1373, which amended Resolution Number 94-748 concerning the Businessperson of the Month Award, renaming the award to the Businessperson of the Quarter, updating the award frequency to be presented on a quarterly basis, revising the nomination process to allow nominations by any commissioner, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Would you care to present if there's questions or you want to present?
I can present.
Okay, go ahead, please, Madam.
So the agenda item requests that the city commission consider and approve Resolution 25-1707. It renames the Businessperson of the Month Award to Businessperson of the Quarter. It adjusts the frequency to a quarterly schedule to align with the city's beautification award. And it revises the nomination process to allow any city commissioner to nominate a business or businessperson for recognition.
Thank you. Any questions of our city clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
No, I don't have any question. I just, I'd like to state that I oppose this. I prefer to have a, each commissioner have the ability to make a nomination. If you look at how the, I know we have difficulty at times coming up with the quarterly beautification award because we have to think about it. But when we look at Martin Luther King and Key to the City.
Right.
We have multiple nominations for multiple commissioners. Are we going to say no to anybody that's nominated? Or are we just going to give away three or four businesspeople of the quarter? I mean, it's easier just to separate it out by having each commissioner wait their turn and allow, I mean, there's very little that an individual commissioner has as a responsibility under our charter and our current ordinances. One is the way we have our districts to our boards appointed. And in this case, this is something that allows each individual commissioner to highlight a businessperson, as opposed to having to try to, you know, get the majority of the rest of the commission to agree on that, on that person, and having more than one. I don't think it's something that should be debated, and I think that it makes more sense to separate it out. Now, if there's a problem with certain commissioners being able to come up with an idea, then maybe we skip it. You skip it or somehow find a way to craft an ordinance that allows for nominations to be put on a list, and then the commissioner can go and look at the list and pull one off. But I really do like the idea of the individual commissioner being able to recognize an individual and just saying, I would like to recognize that individual, that's something that I can do, and as long as there's nothing really objectionable to it, it's going to pass. And I prefer it to be that way. So I do not support changing to a quarterly Businessperson of the Month. Commissioner Morgan?
I was just going to say, if we're struggling to find MLK Award winners or Key to the City Award winners, then we're not paying attention to what our residents do in our city or serve in various boards. And not even part of our various boards, but serve our city with completely unheralded attention. And those are the people that we award those two specific awards to. But to your point about Businessperson of the Month Award, I'll argue the same thing. That means we're not doing our homework enough to be able to find the beautification award or to be able to find a Businessperson of the Month Award when it's our turn to do it. Because we should, we should know these things. My personal humble opinion.
And I agree. And just to respond to him, I was not saying that we were having a problem finding Martin Luther King or Key to the City is that everybody has one, and we all bring them forward, and then we vote for them all.
They all deserve it, right?
And, yeah. And, but it's almost like you have an annual award that's now quarterly because you now have four of them. Is the same thing going to happen with Businessperson of the Month? So you're going to have three businesspeople of the quarter, and why not just break them out monthly? I mean...
I think it should be monthly. I agree with that.
Let's go over to Commissioner.
All right, couple things. I agree, but I just want some clarification. Are you still allowing all five of us to nominate somebody for that, or is it just the one? Because this one rotates, right? The Businessperson, okay. Correct, all right. But the Key to the City Award, I want to, it should be one person for the Key to the City. Because it does dilute it, and I think we had that conversation, and we should kind of be allowed to put our nominations in for that big, because that's a big award, giving the Key to the City. And then we can kind of talk, not talk about it on, well, I guess we would have to talk about it here, but I just, we, a lot of times we nominate and it's five keys to the city. And, you know, but, and every one of them do deserve it. I mean, but it's just, over the years, and I've just never said it until someone actually mentioned it to me, it's like, why are we giving out multiple keys to the city? Because it is a clinical award to a resident here in Longwood. And that's just my thoughts on that. But I agree with you on the other stuff with the...
Just to respond to the Key to the City, as somebody who has received it, I appreciate your comments and...
Thank you. That was a nice, that was a nice slap.
Hashtag this guy.
My face is really red on this side.
Staying with the key.
That was good, that was good.
And it's deserved, but I mean, obviously, that's not what we're talking about here. But I mean, that's something we could think about in terms of maybe everybody nominates, and that's the mayor or the deputy mayor picks or something like that. I don't know.
There's ways to set up something like...
Can I jump in, Ms. Mayor? So let me give you an example. I just picked the Businessperson of the Month for me. Recovery connections in central Florida, right? We were all there at the ribbon cutting. I have the number in my other job I do of how many lives they've saved. It's 1,400 in just the city of Longwood. Am I exaggerating? In unincorporated Longwood, to be exact. So like, when do we start deciphering over who deserves these things over the other? I don't think it's a good look to be doing that on public record in front of everybody when we start talking about the secondary issue we're talking about with Keys to the City and things like that. I don't think that's a good look. And we've never in my, I've been here since 2017, we've never, ever given five keys to the city, ever, since I've been here. We give multiple. We give three, three at most since I've been here in 2017.
I think we've given four once.
No, no, no. No, we have not. Look it up.
I'm pretty sure I was the only one to not...
But 12A is about Businessperson of the Month. So the other one is a declaration on a future date, but let's move on 12A, please. Could I have a motion?
Really? We want to talk about this more.
No, you've already...
No, but, but the Businessperson of the Month should remain one vote in rotating it through because I think the quarterly allows us to vote multiple.
All right, call the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want to know my comments?
Where you been?
The red face was blocking you out.
I know, I know. Because I had some. And I'm totally confused at this point. And I was going to suggest we table this until we understand what we're all talking about because, and send our thoughts to Leann, and then she can do like a matrix or what have you, and know where we're all going with this. Because I don't think we all know where we're going with it. That's just my suggestion.
With this one we do, with this resolution we do.
I'll make the motion. I will make a motion to not adopt Resolution Number 25-1707 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second.
The motion is to not adopt.
Right. Keep it the way it is. Please call the rule.
Deputy Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boni?
Yes.
Commissioner McMillan?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Sackett?
Yes. That being unanimous as a, we will leave it alone as is. Now, we've turned to our city manager's report, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Update, I got three updates for you. First is on the Lewis House. The geotechnical boring began today on the three proposed sites at Ryder Park. Additional soil sampling will occur over the next few days. A question was raised about the future occupancy load, of what we can expect that structure to hold as deemed by the fire marshal. This is a very abstract number, because we don't know what the design is going to be. Once the building goes through the design phase and is determined what the occupancy is gonna be for the building, whether there'll be a bathroom in it, will there be a stage in it, whatever it's gonna house, we will determine at that point what the occupancy load. So, for me to determine or ask staff to determine a number, that's really unknown at this time. On the State Road 434 medians, we have positive news there. The contractor reported today that tree planting will take place beginning either late this week or next week, followed by ground cover installation, so that's the plants and so on and so forth. Again, the delays of this project were caused by the new irrigation system and embedding that new irrigation system in the lime rock left over by the Florida Department of Transportation. The new irrigation system is necessary to support the long-term plant and tree health, and commuters will, should expect intermittent lane closures while the trees are being planted and other work. And as always, the city will continue to post on our social media sites on any closures and the impact they'll have on our residents. And then lastly, Church Avenue right here, crews are performing temporary road repairs in preparation for the upcoming festival, and the city is still gathering additional quotes for the permanent repair work, and that's gonna be the replacement of all the bricks in nice, smooth, orderly fashion to return that road back to its previous state. That is all from my report. Thank you.
I ask you one question on the 434 median. I see a backflow. Is there only one backflow for that whole project?
I don't have that answer for you.
All right.
I can get it.
It's pretty tiny, but it also looks like it's very inviting for a youngster on a bicycle
That's a good call, Brian.
To really hurt it.
Okay.
Can you check it out?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for him?
I do, but I won't.
Two.
Okay, so let's go to city attorney's report.
Yes, I have one item. At the last commission meeting towards, towards the end, there was a question about the rotation of the deputy mayor position, and so I've looked at the charter. Also, Leigh Ann helped me with historical information on this issue. So, also, your rules in, if you adopted, don't speak to this procedure. Historically, the deputy mayor position rotates each year in November. However, there have been occasions like this year where the deputy mayor position rotated because of the election of the mayor from the deputy mayor to the mayor position. So, what the charter says is that the deputy mayor and the mayor serve at the pleasure of the commission. There is an annual rotation of the deputy mayor and a reference to a year term for the deputy mayor position. With respect to November, that date, that is not set forth in the charter, but historically that has been the date. There has been a inconsistency in the historical application of the rotation of the deputy mayor position in November when there was an occurrence of the election of mayor, the election of the mayor in May resulting from the deputy mayor becoming the mayor, and therefore an early rotation of the deputy mayor. In some years that happened, the person that was rotated a deputy mayor in May rotated out of that position in November, and in other occurrences, that person served from May into the following November for more than a year. So, my answer is, it's your call. Because...
I say...
Your mayor, your charter says you, both the mayor and the deputy...
It's at our discretion.
Serve at the pleasure of the commission.
So, I would recommend that, to keep it on track, that we extend it for the year and a half.
I second that.
To do it that way, just so that it's on track. Otherwise, we're gonna have a chaos when the mayor one comes up.
Right, because I thought it's like, well, so it's gonna be mayor or May when it's switched over, now it totally screws everything up to give the full year. But, yeah, that's fine. So, it's, it's, if that's what you want to do, Mayor, go ahead.
I, I think that would be sensible and keep us more on track. So, that would be my motion.
Just, okay, clarify for the record, so...
So that...
Well, but, but it's been on track both ways, so I don't, I don't know what we're keeping on track.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that Deputy Mayor Shoemaker continue to serve as deputy mayor until the second meeting in November 2026.
Second.
Would it be the first meeting in November? Or what?
It's supposed to be the first meeting.
The rotation happens, it's supposed to happen in this meeting and the second.
Oh, okay.
You're right. Sorry.
So, I second that one again. Please call the rule.
Commissioner Boni?
Yes.
Commissioner McMillan?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Sackett?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Wait and wait for it, Abs.
All right, so now, is that it, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir, that's all I have.
All right, city clerk?
When he speaks, woo, we listen.
But he is through, but back on...
All right, go ahead.
Thanks, Dan.
I'd like to ask the commission to consider canceling the first meeting in January. We didn't get a formal voice vote in the last meeting, as done in years past, and the next scheduled meeting would be January 19th.
Mr. Mayor, I move to cancel the first meeting in January.
Well, you're a busy one. I'll second you. There we go.
Second.
Brian was the second.
Okay. All in favor?
Take the rule.
It's just a voice vote.
Okay, all in favor of that way?
Aye.
Opposed? Resilience.
I have one business requesting ribbon cutting. It's Donut Ask, Donut Tell. In 117 East Church Avenue. They're requesting that for December 5th. They open at seven, so they're open to any time, eight o'clock, four, or 4:30. Just what's best. On Church.
Way down over here?
Sorry? It's right by the, 117, right across from the bar, the historic bar.
Okay.
Yeah. So, what time is best? Eight, four, or 4:30?
What day of the week is it?
Fifth, December 5th.
Oh, boy.
Thursday.
It's a Friday, December 5th.
December 5th is a Friday.
Dang it.
All right.
I can't be there.
Can I do coffee and donuts and do it like six in the morning?
Staff, staff is here at eight, but if we vote for seven, then we'll come earlier.
So, no matter what, December 5th, no matter what?
December 5th, yeah, they're just saying whatever time works for you guys.
I like the morning.
I wish I... Just on the record, I can't be there. I'm going to this small thing called the Boys and Girls Club Hall of Fame, no big deal.
All right. I'll eat two donuts.
Okay, so 7:00 AM then works for the commission?
Dang it.
It does for me.
I want to go to that. That stinks. I'm gonna go to that.
And then regarding Commissioner McMillan's request for a proclamation in honor of Engineers' Week, the proclamation is set for February 16th. The Engineers' Week is February 22nd to 28th.
That works.
We're talking for Millie?
Yeah. You can send out the invitation to the TSA Booster Club of Millie. And then, as a reminder, this Wednesday at 4:30, we have the Renova by Design ribbon cutting at 4:30, and then on Thursday at 5:00, we have Form A Wellness ribbon cutting. And then Friday at 12 o'clock, city offices will be closing at noon, preparing for the Longwood Arts and Crafts Festival.
So, when is the Wednesday thing?
Wednesday is at 4:30. That's on Savage.
What, what date?
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
Yes.
At what time?
4:30.